Good evening, everybody. I really appreciate the crowd here and some people showing up. The city is very interested in hearing what your priorities are. And that's what this meeting is about. It's not about us talking. We want to listen to you and get what you want done. So we're going to pass the mic around. Allison has the mic there. Sarah's going to write down some of the things. There's sheets of paper in the back that you can fill out your priorities on and turn them into us. But we want this to be a government for you. And so we want to do the things that we can that the citizens feel is a priority. So does anybody can we get this rolling if you want to make a comment?
I'm coming, Nancy.
Hi, everybody. Okay, so I put a lot of thought into this and I kind of divided it up into two categories. One is, we really have to do this. And the other is, that would be really fun. So we really need the comprehensive emergency management plan that is required by state law. And I know you guys know about it. I don't think it's something that we have in place, let alone practice once a year like Hopeway. And of course, our erosion issues. I know that you guys have been really on top of that recently. That's great. Urgent care, we've talked about that many times. But also in conjunction with that, possibly tweaking within contract limits with our fire department to have as many on staff at once. I'm not sure how their schedule works and what their current staffing level is. But I want to say seven or eight times out of 10 when I've gone to Olympia or returned, I see our ambulances on the road, one or two at a time. And one time, one even turned around before getting back home and went back towards Hopeway. So that's really important if we can kind of work with those schedules. And then the fun part is a unified and beautification community project inducing a unique look and feel for our residents and tourists. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Nancy. I can tell you that the comprehensive plan is being worked on right now. And so we're a month or so into it. And so we'll let everybody know when we get that completed. But we realize that's important. We realize we want to practice an evacuation plan. And so that's underway right now, getting all that figured out with everybody. The erosion, I don't know if they're working right now. The erosion issue is a very sensitive issue. We were given not a very good plan, I didn't think. I'm going to say that from the Corps of Engineers and ecology, we can only use sand. Well, the sand didn't hold up. And so now we've got our public works filling it in with these super sacks, which are these huge, I don't know, like a half a yard probably, Scott, of sand in a sack. And we're going to lower those down against a cliff now that's been formed by the erosion. The waves have been really tough on the area and the wind didn't help either. Then we're going to put sand on that. And then we've got, we've been allowed now because of what the first plan did not work. So we've been allowed to put rock about 10 inches around. And so we're going to lay rock in there and pile that up. And that'll do a lot better job of dissipating the wave energy. And it's temporary, mind you. What we like, what we want to get done is, and we've been talking to our senator, Washington Senator Cantwell's group, but we want to get that jetty repaired that cuts across the bay there and get that built up. And that will take care of really, I think, all of our problems. And we'll probably start getting some accretion back going on and it'll build back out. So that's what's going on with that. Urgent care, we're working on urgent care. I've reached out to some providers and we have providers getting back to us. And they've got to do their own research because they want to look into what the age of our area, you know, what kind of business model it will take to have an urgent care here. But we are working on it and I have been in communication with a provider. So we're trying to get that done. You know, that's probably number one in a lot of people's minds. Got another person who'd like to speak, please?
Hello, I'm Steve Boba. I've lived here going on 30 years. And mine is, has to do with the school speed zone signs. And I know that's the school district, but she enforces the law, her, her and her men. And this is the first year the lights are still there, but they don't work. Instead, they put up a little sign at the high school and a bigger sign at the elementary stating it is enforced 8 to 4 p.m., but the light don't work. So many of us, you know, if you don't see the light working, we ain't going to read the sign. We're going to go 25, sometimes 30, breaking the law a little bit. My whole thing is, I've written about this on Facebook, not only is it an entrapment to citizens, especially our older citizens, you know, have a hard time driving periods, let alone reading a little sign, and the young kids who just don't care. So my thing is either remove the flashing lights on that never worked this year, or at least fix them during the stated time period that they're enforcing the law. My second thing is, has to do with the prosecution of a friend of mine whose mission is to save dogs and cats. Well, she got charged with setting a live trap and accidentally catching a bear. And they said that's against the law. My thing is, I don't think she broke the law. She might have bent it a little. The intent of the law is to prevent trapping pelts. Ambivian don't skin or animals out. So I think the charge is whatever pressure we can put on that leg of our government, we should do. Thank you.
All right, thanks for coming. The school zone, they contracted somebody to put those up. We haven't had any involvement with that. So I'll have to look into them, Steve, and see. But it would be nice if it was flashing between 8 and 4 or they did something else, a little bigger sign or whatever.
Forgot to say it, not only is it an entrapment, but it's an endangerment to our children if people don't slow down.
Gotcha. All right, that's Ron here, who's next?
Hi, I'm Ron Lambert. I'm not a resident of Ocean Shores, but my family does operate several. We operate Bennett's Fish Shack across the street. And we do own some commercial buildings here in the downtown district. So for about 10 years, I've been pleading and working and working and coordinating and assisting with getting a sidewalk project advanced in the downtown Ocean Shores. It is a public known fact that sidewalks connect communities. It also provides safety. And we look at our public safety here in Ocean Shores. We're a growing community and, you know, by the color of my hair, and I was like, glance around the room, I'm not alone. We do have an aging demographic, regardless of if you're 30 or if you're 80, we are an aging demographic. And our public safety is so, so important, whether it be the fire department and the police department or a combination. Then you take our roads department, we have street lights that are burned out or in street standards, the light poles themselves have been knocked down for several years and still haven't been replaced. So public safety and a sidewalk project are our highest priorities. We spend so much money and energy investing in visitors and people moving to Ocean Shores to live this life that we choose to live and we get to live here and we choose to live here. But the public safety is so, so important. So the police station, advancing our fire department, and those two things, folks, this is an oxymoron. We really need to increase our police staff and our fire department staff, but it takes taxation to do that. It does not come free of charge. So let's work together. This whole, this whole room, the environment in here and the energy in here is so positive tonight. And if we could be a little kinder in this coming year and work on some common projects and some common goals, I think we might get that advancement. Thanks.
Mike Bolio, I live on Mount Locust Avenue. One thing I want to talk about is the signs at the schools. And the gentleman back here, he brought it up. I don't know, I've lived here six years and I don't know if it's a state law or a federal law, but those school zones should have a yellow flashing light. And I've never seen one, either at the high school or the grade school. You don't understand why you got a school zone and you don't have those yellow flashing lights working. So that should be really high on the list. And like you said, if you're driving through and you see that flashing, it's going to get your attention, you know, slow down. So I'd like to see those fixed. And then my number one issue, and everybody here that knows me knows what that is, and that's getting better medical facilities here in Ocean Shores. I know we got a mayor that is working on that and supports that issue. I know every single council member who has run for office here has said they support that issue. So let's get the powers that be at the table and figure out what this community needs to do to get a decent medical facility in here. That's it.
All right, thanks.
Thank you, Jan Hyde. I'm here on a positive note and I want to thank the city for keep updating their webpage a little more, a little quicker, a little faster with more information. And I did find, I really appreciate the city statistics that are updated monthly. And that gives all of us an opportunity to see what's going on in the city, who's moving or what's going on. And it's very good and I appreciate it. And I wanted to say thank you to all of the city staff for keeping that updated. It's not a priority necessarily, but it informs us as citizens. And those that want to come in and live in Ocean Shores, they can take a look at us also through your webpage. So thank you.
All right, thanks, Jen. That's Sarah's operation.
My name is Howard. And I like that you were talking about erosion and this, you know, whole area is worried about erosion. But some of the laws that they have, like you can't cut, you know, one tree without getting a permit, or you can't pull up one bush without getting a permit. What I did is I went to, you know, NEDDIE and I said, I have a lot and I have a shed that's getting ruined from all the trees brushing against it. Can I cut some of those bushes back, you know, so that doesn't ruin the structure? Well, she said, one tree or one bush, you have to get a permit, whether if you use a chainsaw or if you pull it up, you have to get a permit. So instead of me taking out a few bushes, I just got a permit and I took everything out. And so I don't have to keep getting permits, you know? And I think it's kind of does the opposite. If you have to pay for a permit every time you have something minor to do on your property, it's going to do the opposite thing. People are just going to clear everything, like myself.
All right, thanks for that. I'll look into that. Not sure about bushes.
Susan Madden. I have a house here. I'm 79 and part of the growing population in Ocean Shores. Seymour is very nice for COVID shots and little things, but I hate the idea that I have to go beyond Aberdeen, which has a very poor hospital, onto Elma or into Olympia for any good medical or extended surgeries or anything of that, you know? It's already been noted that we are an aging population. What is Ocean Shores doing to look to get a hospital-based care?
Well, what I know about it is, is we're not going to be able to get something like that because we're part of the hospital district that the hospital in Aberdeen is, you know, six, that's where that hospital's at. But we can get a walk-in clinic and hopefully an urgent care. And that's what we're working on. But as far as hospitals go, we would have to put the pressure on the Aberdeen Hospital, Graves Harbor Hospital, and get them to move something out here. That's been tried by a lot of different people, myself included. We've had conversations with the CEO there and we've gotten zero traction to get any help out here.
Over here. My name is Steve and I just moved here in June from Michigan. And so far, I've really enjoyed being here. But there's, being here for six months or seven months that I've been here, I can see that there's a need for some items. The biggest thing I ran into, common subject here is healthcare. It took me at least five months to get into a doctor out here and I had to go all the way to Elma for it. Not only do we need an urgent care, but we just need just standard medical care here. We have a growing older population and it just seems like there should be some way to get, make it attractive for a physician or something to live here. I mean, it's, we all moved here because we like it here, we've got the beach and that. There's a way for the city to promote that, to try to get somebody here, even just dentists, eye doctors, just all the basics, besides an urgent care. Another thing, I agree, I drive through that elementary school zone every day and I notice that the lights never work, the speed limit thing, sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't. I do appreciate the police department. They are there at the elementary school, when there's an officer there, when they're letting out and when they're coming in. And I do appreciate that. But I drove through there the other day, got down to, it's supposed to be 20, I was doing 23, 24. I had somebody who was just going to run right over me. And another things, you know, that's on Canal. I always make a left at Ocean Lake and then go on to Point Brown. Well, every once in a while, I got somebody who's in a hurry behind me and I'm holding them up because I'm doing 3 miles an hour with the speed limit. They'll go down Canal, which is 25 the whole stretch, and I'm doing 40, almost 40 down Point Brown, where it's 35, and they'll come out ahead of me by the roundabout. So I got a feeling, I don't live on Canal down there, but I got a feeling those people, you know, if you live on Canal, you're probably tired of people doing 40, 45 miles an hour. Maybe we should put some stop signs on that road too, like you did on Dolphin. Especially, it seems to me there's more houses on Canal that are closer to the road than there is on Dolphin. And I do a lot of biking and walking and road safety, especially, we just had, it was outside the city limit, but we had to hit and run last week to kill somebody. So biking and walking safety is, should be a priority, especially in town. I agree with the gentleman, the business owner here. You know, I've heard since I've been here, people back and forth, oh, the tourists, you know, they love the tourists or hate the tourists. But either way, this town counts on the tourists. And we got to find a way to make this town more appealing for the tourists. I come in town down Point Brown, I come in, and a lot of the businesses look rundown, the buildings are rundown, and that and all, like, you know, this doesn't, it looks like a tourist town to me. You know, and I heard at one of the meetings, the city council meetings, the person that has Canterbury, he was saying that tourism was way down last year compared to the years before going to Long Beach or whatever. Got to find out why they're going there and not here because we're closer to Seattle. And, you know, he's, it takes tax money. Well, the more tourists we get, let the tourists pay the taxes, the sales tax and the more business just helps all of us in this room pay for the stuff that the city needs. And one thing that I'm concerned about too is blight and other ordinances, about enforcing ordinances. And we had problems squatters on our street tied in for blight. Didn't seem like there was much enforcement in the past between for squatters and blight. So another thing that would make our town look a lot more appealing. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Steve, for the delay up here.
My name is Mickey and a few things. One is, when we talked about medical care, I was wondering if you maybe got, I know you can't have a medical hospital here, but maybe from the tribe, maybe they can bring something in that way? Just something, you know? The other thing is the economic zone, because we have an economic zone. We, I don't know how it works, but like new businesses get a tax spray for something to bring in new business. And the other thing is to write grants to different governmental agencies to get the money to do more things. Because the last time we talked to the other mayor before this, he was saying that something about we couldn't get grants, nobody was writing grants. But I was thinking, why not? Why can't we get grants? I don't understand that.
We should have a grant writer and we've had a discussion, she and I. And so she's looking for certain things that we think will help the city out. So I think you'll see some grants coming.
I'm Jane. I want to thank you for doing this. And as you can see, it is, it's a wonderful thing for all the citizens to come in here and be able to bounce and get what their concerns are. Of course, you know one of mine. There are quite a few citizens that are dealing with a water quality problem. And I know you've mentioned it, if you could just touch on that a little bit. Like the gentleman back here talking about Canal Drive, I'm on Canal Drive. I try walking my dogs on Canal Drive. The other day, I countered somebody that wants to run me over on Canal Drive northeast. So that's something that I'm very concerned about. And I know that part of the planning department is working with the walking and biking and there's a lot of good ideas in there. I encourage people to go to those meetings also because it's going to help us out there. They've got a lot of ideas and they're buying in with the public, want the public's ideas on for walking and biking and what their top priorities are. But we really need to do something about the speed. I mean, if we had shoulders to walk on, if we got things like that, it would be different. But with Canal Drive and most of the streets here, you can have no shoulder when I'm walking my dogs. I can't get off the road because I've got goat heads. You know, you take off your shoes and you walk around there and see how old your dogs like walking through goat heads alongside the road. So, but if you could just touch on for those that haven't heard what you've mentioned at the council meeting about the water quality and what the steps are being taken to start looking into maybe improving that in some of the households, I'd appreciate that.
All right, thanks. So we've contracted with a company that works on water systems and they're going to get started here and they're going to start from the wellhead to the faucet. And they're going to go through our whole system and look at what's causing the black slime. It seems to get better when there's been flushing, but I'm hearing from people that it's coming back. So I don't know if flushing is masking the symptom or the problem and, you know? So anyway, we decided, I guess I decided, thanks. I wanted to bring in an independent company to come and look at this and go through the system so that the public can get the answer on what's really going on. And then we can address that to correct it on that. So speed cushions is one of the things that we're looking at. We will have a town hall about that before we implement those. But there's cities in King County that I know of, and I've been told down in Portland and stuff, a lot of the slower streets like Canal that says it's 25 miles an hour, they have speed cushions on them. And these are very sloped speed bumps, so they're very gradual. They have an opening in the center on both sides so that emergency vehicles, police, fire, they can drive straight through without getting a bump. And that's the way they're designed. And they're pretty popular in other counties and that I think may be something that we want to take a look at to start slowing people down. Like, everybody walks around here and we've got a lot of people that are concerned about their safety. And we get some more information. Becky is working on that. We got a lot of information from Nancy. And so we're moving forward on getting the information and we'll bring that to the public and see how much money we want to spend on it. We got to get quotes on that. We can't do anything right now because the asphalt plants are closed. So we've got time to do some research, figure this out, have a public town hall like this and talk to everybody and tell them what we found. And then you guys give us your feedback or what you think. So that's kind of what's going on with that.
Turn the on button on.
It is. It's very green.
Mine's working.
Jetty's off. I was going to do like one side, the other side, but obviously I'm not going to do it right now.
She was first and then.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Marty Bravant. I live here, have lived here full-time for about, had the place for about 15. I too want to mimic. Thank you, Frank. I have been able to come to a town hall meeting where you can talk and like-minded. And it's okay if people aren't always like-minded, but being able to talk in an environment is really good. So I would encourage you to do more if you can. So we touched on a lot of things tonight and I had a bunch of those on there. The only thing I wanted to say on urgent care, I don't even know if it's possible. But is there a way possibly to link up with like Capelis and maybe Seabrook and a few others that would be willing to go in and help with some of the funding of a nice medical care? Maybe not, but you know, Seabrook, bad or good, seems to be building a town around itself. And it might be worth just having the conversations with them to say, hey, how do you feel about that? Because those people are coming from someplace else. And if they want medical or need medical care, they need it now. So just a thought to maybe kind of talk with different ones and kind of share the load. The other thing I wanted to talk to you about is, or mention again, with the water. People have talked a lot about the water situation. My question through, and it touched on it, so I'm not going to go into that. But my other question is, is that we've got all these culverts out in front of people's homes and they are full of water. And then in the summertime, they are full with toxic water that becomes a mosquito mega center. I mean, if you want to get good mosquitoes, come in the summertime to Ocean Shores. We've got you covered. Well, people are going in at their own expense and having to put in the piping and the rocks and the sand and everything to try and get it built up so they don't have to do that again. I don't know who came up with the idea of it. And I understand that we have to get the water to move. That's not my complaint. But having those big culverts just seems, it just doesn't seem like a good idea to me. And especially in the summer, but in the winter, it's, you know, people can get hurt. So I'm wondering if there's a chance that we might be looking at, we can come up with something, you know? Maybe it is partially based with the resident pain, but get these things covered up and have a good drainage system. And I know that's all going to work together with all the water stuff too. It's a combined effect. So that's mine. Another one nobody has touched on tonight, and I'll be hesitant to talk about it, but I'm going to say it anyway. And then I hope it doesn't offend anybody, but I'm talking a little bit about the squatters, the homeless people, and some of the crime that's starting to come into Ocean Shores. We are a small community and, you know, we hear about it coming in and things that are We are a small community and, you know, we hear about it coming in and things that are... And I'm not trying to go over, you know, bring one thing out or, you know. We've got an influx of all of these different things. And is there a possibility of working either again with Grace Harbor, with all the different surrounding communities? We do do a really good job of helping defeat people that can't afford it. And I think we can do more and more with that, with food banks, with everything. But the idea of squatters and the idea of people coming in and doing crimes to our people and our businesses isn't right. I mean, I don't know, maybe I'm wrong. But when you have a child, when a child does something wrong, they have consequences. When you have a teenager and they do something wrong, guess what? No car. You know, there's different things. It's time for us to bring some consequences back, at least in this town. And not just making the police be the bad guys. We can help the citizens. We can get the neighborhood watch programs going a little bit more. We can help with the ring cameras, with calling in when we see something. We can do a number of different things like that, putting motion lights on our house. The lighting that is on the streets, we've got lighting like, you know, at tourist and at Polaris and stuff. But we need more lighting down those roads. But it's something we have to work together. But I can't understand, there has to be consequences. And maybe it's with some of them, it comes down to as simple as you've done it three times, you've been offered services three times, that's it. It's now misdemeanor. I don't know what the answer is. I'm not pretending to say that I do. But I just think it's something we have to look into. Because I do think people come here because they think, oh, you know, they're just a bunch of old farts. Well, guess what? We're not. We can take care of ourselves in many ways and we're a vibrant community. And whether we're young or old, we all have things that we can bring to the table. So we need to say, no, we've had enough of this. It's not going to happen here, so. And I'll bring up the one other that I've mentioned before. So I was far, I went to the council meeting when it was the old council and the new council. And there was a problem with ethics and they didn't want an ethics committee. And so I'm bringing this back up just because I feel like this is something we really need to look at more and more. I hope you're going to, and the new council will revisit. You know, even one of your employees made the comment, and bless her heart, I think it took a lot of guts for her to be able to come up and say, I need help. So an ethics committee is not there to watch every single move that the council makes. That's not the point. Obviously, there's a lot of ethics complaints coming in. And they talk about them being frivolous and that we can't get them done in time and stuff. They only want to prove my point. We need an ethics committee that can come in and they can take a look at those ethics and pass on the ones to the council that need to be looking at. There are lots of frivolous ones coming in. You guys, I'm a former city councillor, so I do know that that happens. But we could go through those or whoever on the board or whatever could go through those frivolous ones, throw them out, not have to worry about it. We can work with the city employee, we can do what we need to do, work with them and go through those things and only give the council ones that they really need to look at. You know, it's because somebody's mad about something, that's not, that's not an ethics complaint. That's just somebody's mad. We could do some of those things and we could take a lot of pressure off the council so they could do more important things that they need to do to help the residents, so. Anyway, last thing I wanted to just say again is, thank you. I really, really like town hall meetings and I really appreciate, you can see by all the people here tonight, that this group of people, they want to see something good. And we need, it can't be just you guys doing it. We have to help you. So let us know what it is that we need to do to help you.
Robert's been waiting patient.
Hi, Robert Norrie. I wanted to bring up a few quick things. Is one of them is, I know the city's been working on it in the past, is this corner to corner locking these lots out without one piece of green left on them. Go down Point Brown. And then their asphalt lane, which they shouldn't be doing. So that's something I think we need to re-look at. And then number two, the bicycle lanes. I went out and spent a ton of money on a bicycle, took it down Point Brown, got down to the end, and right on the corner, the lane ended. I'm like, are you kidding me? Plus, the cars are doing 45, 50 miles an hour. And those are things that I think we really need to look into. But this corner to corner thing, that these houses are getting their occupancies and they shouldn't. There's not a stick on these lots. They're clearing them from one end to the other. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Robert. I can tell you that the council passed an ordinance where, whether it's a camping lot or a home, they got to post a $10,000 bond and they have to plant their trees. So they'll post a $10,000 bond and if they don't plant their trees and get the lot in order, they lose their $10,000 bond after two years. So the council made a great move in trying to give some teeth to that ordinance. And I think they did a good job with that. And that's a motivator for anybody that's developing their lot. You know, you don't want to forfeit a $10,000 bond.
First, a follow-up question to that is, if they forfeit their bond, does the city use that money to purchase the trees that the landlord should have been putting on regardless?
That's correct.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify that. So I just celebrated my 10th year, the end of my 10th year in Ocean Shores. I'm sorry, my 11th year. And when I drove into the park that night, I go, wait a minute, am I in the right place? I've got a park about four rows back. I've never seen that many cars out front. And the other people in here, does my heart do it? People care about the city. People that know me, I have a catchphrase or whatever you want to call it, philosophy is what I call it. The taxpayer money matters. My money matters. And I want this city, and I really believe in my heart that the city will now have that philosophy. It's, I don't want to not do things, but I don't want to spend, I would rather spend $15 million on three different projects instead of $15 million on a single project. And the taxpayers get a lot more for their money. That's what I would like to see.
All right, thanks. My philosophy is I want to tighten things up where they need to be tightened up. And I don't look at this city's, the city's money as a savings account. I want to tighten things up so that we can spend, we have more money to spend on what the citizens want in town, so we're taking that approach. Thanks.
Hi, I want to bring up another touchy subject and it's going to be animals. Nobody's mentioned animals and I am concerned about abused animals. Neglect is abuse. And I don't think that our animal control officer is up to standard on that. I issued a complaint to him. I have pictures of evidence that I submitted to him. And he was unable to identify the evidence. He didn't know what it was, so he did nothing. And it was a burn on a dog, right on his nose from a crack pipe. I still have that picture. I would love to show you. That's unacceptable to me, that this person cannot identify a burn on a dog because if that same mark was on a three-year-old child and he couldn't identify it, what are we doing with him? Why are we paying him? Now, I also have concerns about us, you know, people going in to check over welfare checks. It's been brought up 17 times tonight, how old we all are. There's a lot of people here who don't properly care for themselves or can't take care of themselves anymore. And the first thing they do is bring their animals in with them. Now, if they can't clean and take care and feed themselves, how are they taking care of those animals? That needs to be looked into. And the officer doesn't get to just go out there and say, yep, I showed up, ha ha, thanks, and laugh at me and leave. No, unacceptable. Animals need to be rescued if they are in danger, if they're not being cared for properly. And this is a big issue with me. But thank you for your time and your attention.
All right, thanks.
Kim Nichols, just celebrating our one-year anniversary of living in Ocean Shores. A very intentional move on our part away from the crazy and the pugilist sound areas. So very happy to be here and all the friends we've made along the way. Couple of themes that are emerging, obviously, that are related to public safety and healthcare. And the thought I had kind of merges those a bit and may have been touched on the vulnerable adults issue as well, is there's a program currently in Everett, I think it's current, where paramedics go do community house calls. They go in and check on vulnerable residents that have been identified as being, you know, vulnerable populations. And not only is it a safety issue, but it's also a matter of getting these people services that they may not know about. I think that if we are able to beef up our fire and police with a robust contingent of volunteers who have skills. I mean, we have veterans who have medical training, nursing training. We have people retired from healthcare who have all those skills. And it would be wonderful to make them feel welcome in our EMS community, to be able to go out and be amongst the citizenry, be visible. Check in on people who, maybe the neighbors haven't seen them for three days and they're a bit worried. People who can do an onsite, a proper onsite assessment to see if this person is just lazy or in most cases, not having the correct resources available to them to either care for themselves or have care come to them. But then also, it's a great opportunity to, this lady's point, about, you know, any animals that may be vulnerable in those environments, just getting eyes on. So that would be something I would hope we could consider is really again, mining the talent in this town, developing our volunteer contingent within the EMS community. And, you know, help our first responders, you know, be there for bigger events and, you know, again, take care of each other, so.
All right, thanks. Got one up here.
This was mentioned in the very beginning, but I want to say something else about it. Okay, well, my daughter lives in SeaTac. She does trap neuter and release the feral cats. The whole town of SeaTac, the mayor, the city council, all the veterinarians, they all know her. They love her. She does wonderful work. Vivian Dolan over here traps pets that have escaped and trying to bring them back to their owner. That's what she's doing. So when she traps, when she puts out a trap, sometimes a wild animal will get in there. She's got cameras and she sees it's in there, she just releases it. She's not hurting it. That's not, the trapping laws were made so people don't, you know, trap things and hurt them. She, these are, these are to trap pets, to bring them back home. And my opinion is we should drop the charges against Vivian. She's spending money trying to defend herself.
All right, thanks.
Hi, my name's Sylvia Fane. I'm going to kind of go back a little bit, talking about safety and the streets. One thing that I keep thinking of because I was down there often in Yuma, Arizona, in a senior kind of area, they have reflective paint on all the streets. And so like, when I drive down Ocean Shores Boulevard towards you guys, it is just pitch black, but if you have that reflective paint, I just think for this community, maybe, I don't know how much it would cost, but maybe that's something that could be looked into because I think that would help improve, you know, safety a lot. Second of all, I think with Vivian and all the animal stuff and that, I just want to mention that I think there are ordinances, at least I'm being told from police officers, that there are ordinances where you aren't allowed to even pick up a stray cat off the street because you could end up in jail doing that, which is absolutely ridiculous. And I don't even know if it's true. But I sure appreciate somebody like looking into the fact that, you know, what are these ordinances? If that's an ordinance, that's ridiculous. It needs to be changed. Just like some of the other ones that impact animals and people in this community. Some of this stuff is so old or just was never really rationally thought out. Is there effort going on with people maybe looking into that or something? Just wondering.
There has been communication between council members about looking at the ordinances. I can't give you a timeline for that, but they have talked about looking at it. There are some that the council wanted to update.
Hey, it's Ron Lambert again. When we're talking about public safety, it seems to be a common thread here from crosswalks being painted on a regular basis, from our fog and center lines being striped on a more frequent basis. Let's talk one more, just a little bit more about public safety. And when we said, when I mentioned that things don't come without taxation. If we need more firefighters and more EMTs and more police, that's a taxation that we all have to vote on. And this is really critically important when these bonds come up, that anybody that believes in anything we've been talking about with public safety is that you vote and you get out and vote and vote to pass these initiatives. Otherwise, we're wasting our time and we might as well go out and talk to the ocean and hope for better public safety. Now, one more thing, the sidewalk project. If we get that revitalized, we had a $20 million grant a few councils ago. This has nothing to do with last council, this council, it was three councils ago. We had a $20 million grant from the federal government to put sidewalks up and down Point Brown Boulevard, from the gates of Ocean Shores to the roundabout. That included new street standards with electricity on them, dog watering stations, benches and trash receptacles, angle parking, a bike lane. When we get grants, it's typically, I think Ocean Shores had around a million dollar matching for the $20 million. And we had a council, for some reason or another, voted to send that grant money back. A big pause, I have to collect myself. Can you help me? How many years ago was that?
2017?
2017, okay. So there is grant money available. So that's something that isn't a taxation, especially when the city has set aside a million dollars for that $20 million. Now, was it exactly what we wanted? The answer is no. However, to get anything done in today's environment, whether it be political, at the federal level or right down here in Little Ocean Shores, we have to be willing to accept improvements through compromise. And that council got so sideways, they couldn't figure out how to spell compromise. So here's another thing, public safety building, a new police station, a new city hall. I've had the opportunity to travel across the United States of America in a motorhome and drop in all these small little towns and support local independent businesses. And lo and behold, just about every one of them has a new city hall, a new police department, a new library. So I get nosy and start asking. Most of them were funded by grants. City of Elma, I think, chief, did they get their approval for that new police station there?
Not yet.
Not yet, okay. So there is, there is money out there that's not going to cost us directly money here in Ocean Shores to make some fantastic improvements. Ocean Shores to make some fantastic improvements. Again, and when it comes to, one more time, when it comes to police officers, EMTs and firefighters, that's on us. We have to vote that. Thanks.
I'd like to commend the police officers in this area, and, because my wife had an operation, and she was bleeding out a lot, and it was a big huge puddle. And I had to try to get her to Aberdeen Hospital as fast as I could. And I got out of here as fast as I could, and a police officer from the city here pulled me over. And I told him what was going on, she was bleeding out and I needed to hurry. He said, "I'm not gonna give you a ticket, I'm not gonna hold you up, see you later." And that's amazing for police officers to care that much. Usually, I've lived in a lot of areas, and we don't have the police officers we have here in this little town.
Well, thanks for that. We got a great group of police officers working here. Super common sense, and they care about the community, so that's a nice story here.
Frank, I wanted to find out, when is the next time we're gonna hear from the golf course people to come and give us an update as to what's happening?
The next council meeting.
Next council meeting, you'll get a yearly report from last year.
Okay, it's gonna be on a yearly basis?
It'll be quarterly. But we're gonna get, you're gonna get a final tally for what happened here with the golf course at the next meeting for 2023.
That's awesome, thank you.
Hi, everyone, my name's Dana Clark. And bear with me, because this question just came up while we were talking about, you know, voting yes for to pay more taxes, so that we can have more police, we can have more ambulance, we can have more resources. I always, my issue is, that I like to campaign for, is affordable housing and making sure that people who work here can live here. Historically, I've only ever lived in cities as an adult, and quite often, people who work in the cities that I've come from cannot afford to live in the cities. And it's happening in small towns. So, I'm just putting it out there, like, if we start to pass an increase in taxes here, can we also have a program for people with limited income or lower income to be, you know, I forgot the word. What's the word? Knocked it up? Satinized. Satinized.
Cast free. Well, we do, we do have a program for our utilities, and we will have a booth here at a, gosh, I can't remember the, it's the 29th. There's a fair at the Lions Club, is it the 29th?
31st.
Or 31st, I'm sorry. And so, there'll be somebody from the city there to help assist people with their utility billing.
My name is Dory Beham, and I have lived here in Ocean Shores for over six years, and I'm a business owner. And I wanna touch on the downtown development a little bit. I love the idea of having the sidewalk project. I'm, I will help out as much as I can with that, Ron. You know, 'cause I can see benches and, and, you know, sidewalks and benches and trashcans, and it'll just make the city look that much nicer. And when tourists come to town, they'll see that and go, "Oh, what a nice place to come visit." Right now, it looks so rundown. There are buildings falling apart. And it's just horrible. Now, we've owned our business since 2020, and we've increased our business every year, except for this last year. So, you know, business is down, our, we have employees that, you know, depend on their jobs, excuse me, on their jobs, and, you know, we depend on our business so that we can, you know, live and pay for our house. So, you know, it's really important to me that we attract tourists who are going to support the businesses here, and the businesses in turn pay the taxes. You know, we pay taxes every quarter to the city, and, you know, it helps support all these projects. So, you know, my point is, let's make Ocean Shores beautiful and welcoming.
Hi, I'm Bill, and I have an interest in aviation, and for that reason, I have a question about our local airport, and wondering what the plans are as far as maintaining the airport, possibly even making improvements to it. And another related question is, with the Hockenheim Airport being much bigger, is there a chance that there could be a kind of shuttle service between Ocean Shores and the Hockenheim Airport?
Well, I can tell you I can't answer that question. I wish I could. I know that we've been maintaining the airport, and we actually did some tree trimming and stuff that, you know, to clean that up, but I don't know that there's any improvements in the plans right now on a shuttle. I haven't heard nothing about a shuttle, but, you know, it'd be a good idea, maybe, if we got, if we have to have the business, of course.
I'm Corinne, and I've lived here for three years now. We also had a vacation home here for about 10 years. And we live on Duck Lake, and one thing that hasn't been brought up is the cleanliness of the lakes and the canals. We're, we are a tourist town, and a lot of people who don't live on the lakes and canals do use the lakes and canals. And it's really sad that in the summertime, you feel like you can't use the lakes, because they're slimy and, and they've got the toxic algae on them, and that, that's a real problem, I think.
Thanks for that question. We're working on a master plan for the water, and we're gonna get a playbook, let's say, on what we need to do to clean it up. So, once we get that, we're gonna start implementing the process of cleaning some things up with the waterways. They're atrocious, actually, at best.
I've lived here for a couple of years, and we drive around a lot, and maybe, well, three times this week, we got saw honey buckets dipped over. Yesterday, we saw one that grew across Ocean Shore Boulevard in the park. And the door was down, I said, "Maybe we should go see if there's somebody in there." So, anyway, the day before yesterday, we were coming down Ocean Shore Boulevard, crossed on the other side, going the wrong way, I'm not gonna say who it was, but he was reading meters, parked in one lane, going that way with these doors open, reading the meter. And there was another one on the other side where we were, going the same way we were, in the lane, stopped, reading meters, coming back this way. So, and another thing is the deer feeding. We have got, I, generally, we take pictures. I've seen people stand beside, they do not feed the animals, bucket, dumping apples out and feeding them. One person, we saw a deer going in the house. I thought, this is the way that this is. The open person should be out there taking care of his house. Because it's not a healthy thing, the dogs, people are walking, the dog get down on them. Anyway, thank you.
Thanks for your comment. I think you probably should have looked to see if there was a guy in there. I know for a fact, I've been on a couple of construction jobs where that actually happened to somebody. Thanks for your comment.
My name is Caroline Emmert, and I wanna touch on what she was talking about. One of the things I've learned in the two years that I, since I've moved here, is, yes, the downtown area on Point Brown, it's rundown, it's sad, she's, she's in bad shape. But here's the problem, a lot of those businesses, they don't own the building. They lease it from somebody who doesn't even live here, and they don't care. They don't come here, they don't look at it, they collect their lease money, and they live in their Lakewood condos or wherever it is they live. What I would like to see is some sort of a community consortium that could get funds, capital funding from some source, and help these business owners buy the building that they're living in. And that would make it much more enjoyable and much more able to spruce up the outside of those buildings and make this town presentable. The other thing, the other thing I wanna touch on is, yes, this reflective, reflective on the roads. You drive down Duck Lake Drive at dusk and later, and I live on Duck Drive. We live two miles south of the airport. You travel with your high beams on, you can kind of barely see the road. When someone comes at you, you have to turn your high beams off, their lights are blinding you. Several times, I've come close to driving off into these nasty culverts and ditches, and I don't wanna do that. I'll come to a stop. We need to have better striping on all of these roads. I had occasion to drive over to, off of Taurus and Lowlands area, and I couldn't see a darn thing on that road. You cannot see, and it's very dangerous, it ties right into the public safety. If you can't see where you're going, you don't know somebody on the road, someone's gonna die or get seriously injured, and I don't want it to be any one of the people in this room. Thank you.
Thanks for your comment, and we're gonna seriously look at this reflective paint thing, I'm glad it got brought up, thank you.
Hello, my name is Jeff Owen, and I've been coming to Ocean Shores for over 60 years, my family and I, and I've lived here for 17 years. I've worked at the hotels over the years, I've actually worked, I don't work any longer, well, not for anybody that pays me. I wanted to talk about a couple different things. There's a huge safety issue here, we do have a speeding problem, we've talked about that, Mr. Mayor, and I like the idea of reflective paint, but there are more important things. I don't know if we're aware of how many fire plugs actually work in our system or need to be addressed. I know that years ago, there was a campaign to adopt the fire hydrant and paint it, but the maintenance system on those, do they work? Do they get flushed? But is there a fire in your neighborhood or your house? Does your fire plug work? That's my question. So, and the other thing is the fresh waterways. I know you talk about cleaning them up, but we need a long-term plan. We don't have a long-term plan. It's a rescue every year. A woman mentioned that the levels drop, we don't have anything to feed them with fresh water, and people are allowed to irrigate. I don't think people are aware that we could lose a foot to 18 inches, and I've measured it over the years. I've lived on the waterways for 15 years here, and I spend a lot of time out there. So, I hope that we can develop a program that we're not rescuing every year, throw this out, let's throw that out. And I talked with somebody who's lived here for a lot longer than I have, who talks about, we have a sloughing problem. So, all the buildings cost a lot of that sand and soil to slough back into the canals. So, are we losing water? Are we losing usability? It becomes a swamp if we can't use it, and our homes live on swamps. So, I'd just like to see us keep, get a long-term plan.
Thanks for your comment. Yes, that fresh waterways master plan that we got coming is gonna cover that, Jeff, and, you know, I'm tired of spraying every year and just putting more, you know, so basically, you're just feeding the new plants coming up with the dead material, because it fertilizes in the water, and it's been a problem. So, we're addressing that, and we wanna actually start moving on that one, to get that plan in our hands.
I would like to bring up a subject that no one's mentioned yet, and we've been coming here for a lot of years, and we've lived here for, going on eight years now, the shuttle between Ocean Shores and Westport, that was a fun thing, my kid used to go on that, they used to love it, we did it all the time. Is there any possibility that you're gonna bring that back?
Well, as of now, we have nowhere to put that shuttle. That marina is so full of silt that there's nowhere to bring it in. I wrote that myself, and it was, it was a blast to go over to Westport on a nice day. And I'd love to see it come back, but until we can get that marina straightened out, I don't see any opportunities for that, unfortunately. Yeah, so, the tribe owns the marina and the campground next to it. It's up for sale right now, I heard. So, maybe somebody will come in and buy it and clean it up. It used to have charter boats in it, and it was, it was a very functioning and well-used marina at one time. There used to be a hotel, you guys in Vineyard for a while know that, but that hotel was for the fishermen coming down, and that fell apart too, so that's been tore out, but I'd love to see that revived, you know, and get that going again.
Okay, my name is Cindy Warren, and we're talking about downtown, and we have lived here 10 years, I worked in a gift shop for eight years, and a big problem for tourists, and if we all go shopping to get up a gift, there's no restrooms. And it's a huge problem for customers when they come into one of the gift shops, because most of the restrooms are back in the storage in the back of the store, and that becomes a liability, so we're unable to let customers back there to use the restroom. So, I think that that's something that we should be looking at also when we're doing sidewalks and benches and having restrooms there also. Thank you.
Thank you.
I hope Allison's keeping track of everybody.
No, I don't.
It's tough. Everybody raising their hand at one time.
This is, this is for my brother, unfortunately, he doesn't get out of it out much anymore, but he spent his whole career in safety, was a safety engineer for Lawrence Livermore Labs, and then for the nuclear power industry on the East Coast. And for about three years, my daughter lived with us, and when she was living here in Ocean Shores, she worked at two of the hotels, and she was evening clerk, I guess, like 3:00 to 11:00 or 3:00 in midnight or whatever. And someone, she, she's getting ready to go to work, my brother goes, "So, what do you do, what do you do if there's a fire in your hotel?" And my daughter goes, "I get out." "That's good for you, but what about everybody else?" And she said, "I don't know," and he says, "Do you have, you should have a safety manual at your desk that explains what you should do for that property during an emergency. Do you have it?" She says, "I've never seen it," and he says, "Well, go look." So, she went in, she goes, "Oh, no, nothing there, go back and ask your boss." So, she, next thing, "No, we don't got one." That was said for both hotels, and if we're talking about safety, this city is so dependent on tourists, I can only, I mean, it scares the Jesus out of me to think, if we were to have a hotel fire, the people manning the desks didn't know the proper procedures to get that hotel evacuated, and we lose six, eight, 12 tourists in a hotel fire, what's that gonna do to the city? I don't know that the fire department has ever addressed it, I know it's been brought up to them, but that's just something that I think we should find out. If it hasn't been addressed, I think every hotel should have an emergency evacuation plan for that building, and all their employees should know how to process it.
Right, thanks for a good point. I think we should run another board up here.
I don't see animal problems with our animal control officer up there. Yeah, I can make board. What does animal control entail? Animal control and having somebody that actually cares, cares, and does something about the animals, because it's important.
Right, we got that, thank you.
All right, I'm Kurt Dooley, I wanna say hi, Frank.
Hello, Kurt Dooley.
But also, I appreciate the city's working on the emergency management plan now. Does that still include, or does it include, looking into the possibility of another evacuation route out of the city?
Right now, everything's on the table, so we've talked about that in our meetings.
Hi, my name's Sharon. I agree with all the input we've had so far tonight concerning healthcare and safety, but I want to address something that I think is also important and they've touched on it a little bit, is we are a destination, but you know what, a lot of people don't even know what we have to offer here. And, you know, maybe we could get some committees together and maybe the city needs to have a rebranding and come up with, you know, new slogans, this is our destination and let people know what we're all about. And along with that, our downtown does look tired and I know the beautification committee tries, but, you know, maybe we all need to step in and offer help to some of these committees. And I think it would, you know, just really, really help and bring everyone together. And then along with that, you're gonna get to tourism, you know. People like to come to someplace that looks nice, new boardwalks, new sidewalks, they don't want to come to a tired town. And, you know, and then with along with that, I think I would like to see some of the LTAC dollars go back into this city because that's what those hotels are paying for, you know. They have a lot of outside marketing that the monies go to. We need to really address that and look at that and work with the businesses.
Thanks for your comment. I honestly do not know if LTAC money could be used for sprucing up the town or not, but Willa can do it, Sharon.
My name's Jim and I've lived here for eight years and one of my pet peeves is safety. We had the gentleman, you know, his fifties expired out just right outside the gates of town here almost. And my question is, I think there's a lot of, my statement, I guess I should say, is I think there's a lot of things that we can do as individuals. When you're out at night, wear safety clothing. Walk around your car before you go on a trip, at least once a week and look and see if your tires are low or maybe, you know, check your taillights and things like that, you know. I come back from Aberdeen about three times a week and I always pass at least seven to eight cars that have some type of lighting deficiency on it. And so I know that it's not just us, but it's the area itself. And my final comment is, we've got a new stage city for us now, so to speak, and I think if we dig in, start going to some of these freshwaterways meetings and some of the meetings that's around town, we can actually all make the town just a little bit better. And pick a project that's a pet project for you and stick on it. I know I'm not, I can't go to everything, but there's things that I, that I like as far as the freshwaterways and things like that. And if you like something, pets, whatever, then go to that meeting and really drill home on it and see what's going on. We've got a new skate park now, we've got a lot of activity going, we've got a beautiful dog park and we've got some things that's really up and going and people that are really heading these committees. So I would say bury in on it and enjoy it. And remember, our town is a jewel out here and it has yet to be mined.
Thanks Jim. So everybody knows, we have vacancies on committees, freshwaterways being one of them, and please, if you'd like to volunteer and get involved, we need your help. So take a look and see what vacancies are available and maybe one of them would fit what you'd like to do for the community.
Robert, again, real quick, on our news that we watch every night and they talk about the weather, why does Hoaklim and Aberdeen seem to be the weather? There's nothing, well, somebody noted that we need a weather station and then they'll start paying attention to us, but, you know, their weather's so different than ours, like during the summer, we'd be twenty degrees cooler than them and people would come to us, but they think they got the same weather as Hoaklim. But I was just, if we need a weather station, let's get one so we can book the stations to actually put us on there. Somebody on our coastal area, thank you.
Thanks Robert. Jeff Owen again. I actually picked up an application today, Frank.
Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome. I wanted to address a couple things. The gentleman was talking about training in hotels. When I worked in hotels, both hotels, the Grace Harbor Emergency Management came in and trained the staff. So, I would like to suggest that we do some kind of public training. I don't think people are aware of what to do in the case of a, you know, we talked about having events, but do you know what to do if this place flooded or if we had liquefaction of the sand? They have a lot of really great resources available through Grace Harbor Emergency Management and they, I believe if we had a big enough crowd, that we could get them to come and teach us as a group so that, you know, people that don't know, the new people that, I see questions, a lot of people ask questions that could easily be answered if they just attended something that taught them the basics of what tsunami is.
All right, good comment, thanks.
My name's Sam Corrigan. I just have a question. Where's City Hall?
We got three addresses, right? Five addresses, so that's where it's, that's where it's at. It would be, it would be great to have a city hall and have everybody in one building, but that's a lot of money. And so that would be up to the public if they wanted to spend the money to get that built. I'd be in favor of it, but I'm not gonna ask for it.
Also, to pick up an application to be on any of the committees or boards that's online, all online, in OceanShores.gov.
You could pick one up physically, I did that today.
Where'd you get it?
At the end of, the opposite of the gasket, where the old mayor's offices.
Sarah, what's the address?
Eight oh one, thank you. Menard Avenue, don't ask me the letters, and Building A.
If you go to Anchor Bank and go west one block, city offices around that, right? It used to be Anchor Bank, first security, I'm sorry.
Just to touch on the weather station thing, I actually looked into that. In order for us to get on the map, we do have to have a weather station and someone needs to be responsible for it and we need a place for it. Now, in my research, I found that we do have a weather station, but it's a personal one. There's someone here in town who has a lot with a weather station on it, but I was unable to find out who it was. So, if we want to get on the map for the weather, we need to find a place to put the weather station and someone needs to be responsible for it because they have to collect the data and they need to send it in order for us to get there. I know there's a lot of people that don't get on Facebook and that kind of thing and have problems with hearing where things are. Is there any talk about any kind of, getting any kind of a news type thing up and going again in Ocean Shores? I don't know if there's any interest, but another way basically to try to get the information out to people who don't necessarily follow on Facebook or whatever, so that's just a comment. Another just possibility of comment, obviously many, many years ago, Leavenworth was a dying city. I mean, they were dead in the water and the powers that be got together and came up with a compromise and found a new way to make the town attractive. And they also had the restrooms put in and had different things. I'm not proposing we become Leavenworth, but have we considered, we are a beach town. Why don't we come in with beautiful beach, making the downtown area look really beachy? And bring in, and bring, yeah, bring in seafood, bring in those different things. Again, offering the public some facilities that they need too, but if we consider, and maybe it isn't that, but I'm just saying, we could do, I mean, pirates, we could do any kind of a theme that we wanted to follow in this town and if we could get people to buy into it and make it look like that, there would be your instant draw. The kids want to go see it because we do have some neat things, we have some really fun things for the kids to do here. But we could elaborate and really make that something, so that was just my question. The other thing, maybe, and I don't think we have one, do we have a chamber of commerce here?
No, we do not.
Can I suggest, maybe I'm being stupid, but can I suggest that we consider forming one? You guys are looking at me like I must be out of my mind. Okay, so, then we need somebody, okay, I'm back to my ethics stuff again. Anyway, I just, there's just some ideas, I mean, there's no reason that we can't pop out and show some, you know, look at some ideas and think, okay, who can we get to buy into this? And that grant money, there's a ton of grant money that people don't realize is available. And I'm so glad to hear you say that you now have a grant writer, that's, they're worth every penny, usually, so.
We've had a grant writer for a little while now, I don't know how long she's been with the city, but we've also, we're hiring a lobbyist and I think that'll be money well spent to get a lobbyist there. Hoaklim and Aberdeen did quite well with one, so. Lobby the politicians so we can get money from them. Yeah, funnel money to us, so, anyway, just so you know that we're working on that.
Hi, my name's Lyle, I'm Ron Bennett, and I know that Ron has mentioned grants and several other people. I've been here a long time and I've watched us get a lot of grants that fell apart. And the reason they fell apart wasn't that anyone wanted, wanted them not to work, but there wasn't the actual realization, every grant comes with stipulations and you have to be willing to honor those. And it was, Ron, it was a group of people about this size that torpedoed the last sidewalk grant. And they did it because everyone had a way they wanted to do it and they were unwilling to work with others. Now, I'm not talking about city leaders, I'm talking about residents of the city. And so it's important if we're going after grants, that we get on the same page because we have turned back far too many grants and pretty soon they're gonna dry up. Thank you.
Thanks for your comment. Do we have any other questions?
Jane, did you? And then over there.
So first I had a comment and then I had a question, but my comment is, those of you who've had to deal with me and heard this over and over, please, if you can, attend the city meetings, all the city meetings. There's quite a few things that are on the board, that Sarah's put on the board and topics that have been brought up that are actually being dealt with or have already been dealt with through planning department, the walking and biking, those are some big ones. There's a survey on the city website right now for the walking and biking, I mean, they're heavily into that and trying to get feedback and with that along, planning department, it was just, there was just an ordinance passed with council at the last council meeting for planning. If you can't attend, everything's on recording, Sarah does a good job, it's on the website, you can pull the calendar up and it tells you when the meetings are, the agendas are attached so you can see what's on the agenda. But there's such a wonderful group of people here tonight. If you can find time to make it to one or two or like Jim said, something that you're interested in and just invest that time to help our council out, to help our city government out and administration because they can't do it all on their own either. So, it would be really nice to see groups like this or larger groups. There's some of the meetings that I attend through city and there's one or two people in there. But then I look around this room and see how many people are really concerned and really interested and they do listen. The planning, the planning commission is great, they allow public comment before and after, parks department is now allowed public comment before and after, so you can ask about things that they've addressed. So, the city government and administration has become very welcoming and it's a breath of fresh air. Good, there goes my time. Thank you, very much. But you can go there and get your ideas and anything you can volunteer with is very helpful too.
Or email.
Yes, or email, definitely. So, and I've asked Sarah and I don't know if there's something that works about, for those that aren't online, about getting a calendar mailed out once a month or something with city events on it for those that aren't online. But my question to you, a lot of, a lot of things that have been brought up tonight are the accident that happened on 1/15. That is not part of Ocean Shores, we can't do anything about it. But my question would be, what can we do to start pressuring the state to start, to start taking better care, bigger shoulders, things like that? And will the citizens, you know, give us the information we need if we need to start shouting out to what we can do to get better access in and out of Ocean Shores and more safe corridor through that area?
I don't really have an answer for that, to be honest with you, but, you know, I guess we need to contact our senators and representatives about that and start rattling their chains. They don't hear from the public really and we gotta start doing that.
This is Corinne again and I just want to piggyback on what Caroline was talking about in regards to the businesses and how rundown some of them are. Is there any way for the city to create ordinances like they do in other cities where you have to maintain your building to a certain standard or you're gonna get fined? And if they can't maintain their buildings, then they need to have steep fines on them. There's a lot of buildings that are just rotting away to nothing, they're not being painted, they're not being maintained and, you know, the people who lease them don't have any, you know, teeth to be able to do anything to the building either. So I think that that's, might be a way for the city to be able to do that. That's the way Leavenworth did a lot of their things, they, the first ones is you had to have your buildings be up to a certain standard, they had to meet whatever design was built for those buildings. There's also a lot of businesses that aren't even being used as businesses. You've got a whole strip of businesses that have all of the apartments above and they're supposed to have a little business below, but down below is nothing. It's like an opportunity for a business, but no business is there, no parking there because they've got it all blocked off because they've turned everything into an apartment and that maybe wasn't the intent of that business to begin with.
Thanks for your comment, that's a good subject for the council to kick around and discuss.
Hi, I'm Tom and I'm from Rhode Island. I'm just curious, there's lots of events through the summer, more so than in the winter, but just on open weekends, is there any way to get other events, like say around Somsfer or something, Car Rally or something, something that would get more people to come into town and generate money?
We got a pretty full schedule for right here. We got, we got an event this weekend coming up. I like the Car Rally thing, I'd be. Yeah, we're looking at things and George is juggling the schedule, but we've got quite a few items going on, on his schedule, so you can look, you can get that online, right?
Uh, not, we're waiting for the recap, they didn't print it right, so.
That'll be online here, George.
The weekends are.
Check that out on our website.
All days of the year. Of this year.
Well, weekend days, midweeks are pretty.
No, no, it's, it's.
Because I've got some, I've got this big plan from George a couple days ago.
Yeah, he's, he commissioned this group that does like across the state, like P Ds and blah, 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 to have their things here, so they started.
Dave, right?
Yes, hi.
I have a question for you. So without a chamber, how, how does promotions get out to the general public outside of Ocean Shores? Who does it promoting for the city?
Well, there's a group, Greater Grace Harbor, and that's kind of like a chamber of commerce for the whole county and so they've been tasked with doing that. I know that the hotel group got money from LTAC to advertise and they're working on that. They've actually come up with some pretty nice videos and so that's gonna be, they're gonna take over some advertising for Ocean Shores, get people down here. But they've done a good job with the videos I've seen, so that'll be coming out.
I've got kind of a dumb question, I'm new here, so what is the theme for Ocean Shores? Raise your flag? Razor Clams? Nice by the beach, what is it?
We don't have an official slogan, but maybe the public can come up with one.
I was trying to identify what, what they promote, actually, I mean.
More of the shores.
The woman at the standing at the door is...
More of the shores, there you go.
We're dealing with a shore, this is how it's, okay, that makes sense.
Yeah, we, we've been talking about, oh, somebody else?
No, go ahead.
Oh, we've been talking about getting tourists in here and activities in the, here for the weekends. But what about, we've got a golf course, we've got hotels, we've got a conference building here. How about trying to get some business conferences in here on the weekdays? You know, because I don't, I used to be in business, we had conferences and, and something, we would go out someplace where, you know, you golf a day and then you'd have your business meetings the next day or something. Has I, has anybody ever thought of targeting that market? Because, you know, we're only two and a half hours from Seattle. You'd think, some people would be dying to get out of there once in a while.
Well, I can see George, George is looking into that and George and I have talked. I came from building trades, you know, I'm a electrician. And so yeah, different, twice, twice a year we went somewhere. And so George and I have talked about that, we got to see how that's going to fit in the schedule. But yes, we are looking at that because when it's a business, they're all heading home by Friday. And so it still kind of frees up the weekends for things, so you know, it's a matter of juggling the schedule and, and he's working on that. Frank fix it already.
Frank, Frank already fixed it.
I didn't even know it.
A lot of things going on in my head in the last few weeks. You got any more questions, I can't...
What will you do with all these things that you're... Are you going to be able to, I mean, you're going to take them back, but is there a way to get some of this, you know, talk about, okay, here's what we have going on with your thing tonight, here's some of the, you know, the highlights or some of the stuff, you know, and then saying, you know, if you're interested, is there just some kind of a little word that can just go out to people to kind of start maybe getting into?
Well, we're going to put it on the, on our website after we tally everything up and then also these things here. We've got people's, you know, requests for what they think their top items are for the city to do. So that's, that's why we're keeping, we're going to keep this and get it logged and we'll present it on our Facebook page, or not our Facebook, well, maybe Facebook page, but on our city website.
Hi, Sylvia. First of all, 14 years ago, we bought our...
It's so bad.
Seven hours. Hi, I'm Sylvia.
You stand up and turn around.
That's how you control the time clock, sorry.
Push the button.
We bought property down here about 14 years ago and have lived permanently down here for a year. And just a few little things from all of it that I've heard. There've been at least two urgent cares, really nice ones, that were here in the last 14 years, ran each of them for maybe a year or two, and then, yeah, they, and then they were just, and they, they went. Because it was private doctors and they couldn't afford to do that. So I hope that works out for everyone. Second of all, never mind a calendar.
Okay, so we had, we had a couple of private people set up and that was really a tough task when you got to do the billing, appointments, insurance, right? And then take care of the patients. So that's why I'm looking at bringing in a provider that has the backup, plus they have help in Olympia, so you get referrals.
So like Providence or something like that?
That's what we're looking into, yeah. I haven't heard anything about that. It might be rumors.
They have, they still have the reservation.
Yeah, okay. Anybody else got a question?
Just one more. Just, it's a revenue source that I think we are missing out on. If we charge $5 for a fireworks permit, because we're the only place in the whole state of Washington that you can light fireworks at, we probably have enough money for some of the beautification projects that will happen or some fireworks projects.
Last of all, I think that we need to let Frank go home, he's got enough on that plate and that floor. And everybody that helped put this on, and you did a really good job with the first one. This is not going to be the last one, so you guys, they're white, they can talk about and come back again. Thank you, Frank.
We got one more here, I guess.
So a few of us have been...
They can't hear you back here. Here comes the mic, you need the mic. No, here, here.
Over here, Allison.
Right there.
Jane?
No, not me.
It's ready to go.
It's ready to go.
So a few of us have been kind of batting around the slogan, rebranding idea. And the idea of having a contest within our citizens to submit ideas has come up. Is there a way we could facilitate that?
I'm sure there is, you know. We could, we can put someone online, we can bring it up at the council meetings. Yeah, that'd be a great idea. Get the whole community involved and then have a vote.
There goes Cook's winner here.
I'm Doug Nichols, I've been here a year, my wife spoke. I'm a retired firefighter EMT for 25 years. One of the things that I've seen about this town is a couple of things that kind of, I want to get some answers. And I think Chief Ritter should be here to answer some of these questions. We have a fire department that is outstanding, to my understanding. They do their job the way they're supposed to do it. They're very professional. That's my, not my knock. What my knock is, is we're paying these guys to sit around and do nothing other than respond to calls. Fire hydrant testing, that was our priority on our weekends. We test hydrants. City Works didn't have to bother them. If there was a problem with them, they took care of it. Are we paying for guys to sit or are we paying for them to do their job? Their response times would be shorter because they're out in the public, they're being visible. If there's something on the south end, they could respond if they're out. If something happens on the north end, they could respond. We're paying for these guys to be there. So let's, you know, look at that. You know, the welfare checks, we did that also. Building inspections, we did that also. We're, we're so spread out with all of these arms and entities that, you know, let's kind of work at getting them spread out to where they're helping us instead of hindering us.
All right, thanks. Are we calling this a night, everybody? Okay, thank you so much for talking about, I really appreciate it. We'll have more of these, obviously, and talk about other subjects, but this is a great start and thanks again for coming here.